Good evening. Welcome to the regularly scheduled Bangor City Council meeting. It is November 10th. It is 7:00 PM. We start all of our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I have asked Chief Hathaway if he would lead us in that.
Madam Chair, before we start, I would like to make a motion that we suspend remote public comment tonight in respect to the current issues we have had, and it is on the agenda this evening for discussion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we suspend remote comments this evening. It is on the agenda further down tonight with its own item, and we are doing some other work on that program. So is there any objection to the order? Seeing none, we will be suspending any remote comments this evening. Okay, we do have a section. This is going to be a little choppy read because I'm going to be bypassing some of the things that we're working on that we're dealing with the remote. This is just the policy for the public comment. Following the pledge is always the portion of the meeting set aside for general public comment related to city business that is, does not appear on that evening's agenda. Public comment requires a person to state their name and whether they are a resident of Bangor. We have adopted a public policy comment that we will adhere to that governs topics, comments considered out of order or offensive, or confidential, and a time limit of 15 minutes at the beginning of the meeting. And if necessary, we have the option to add time at the end of the business meeting. The public comment period is for city council members to listen, not to respond or debate with persons during the public comment period. If you do not live in Bangor or own property in Bangor, please allow those who do to have the opportunity to speak first. If you'd like to offer comment on an item related to city business, you may approach the podium. And there is a link on the city website which talks about our current public policy comment. Now, that may change a little bit, but it is still posted on there. Okay. Do we have anyone wishing to speak? Good evening.
Thank you. Is anybody going to turn the cameras on or are they on YouTube night?
Hmm, that's a good question. Our cameras are not on.
Yeah, no.
They're out there?
On YouTube.
Okay, thanks.
Good. Okay. There's your answer.
Yeah, thank you. One, I don't know if anyone could show us with our fingers what one and a half millimeter is. It's really small, right? Like this? We are one and a half millimeters away from a cure to Parkinson's and other blood-related diseases such as cancer and diabetes. We have learned the speed of light, and we have learned the resonance of blood, the practice has. There are off-the-shelf products for everything from your butt to your brain or your skin into your digestive tract that are healed within days and minutes and hours, literally. They know the resonance of blood. They know the speed of light that was provided to us before almost all of us were born, and they use that clock that was given to us with US and our allies in Americas and Europe and Asias back in the 1950s. It's the same clock we're still using today, but they don't have the magnetism constant. And it should be being taught in our schools. It's an order of mathematical value on the order of billions, and the speed of light is at second. So it doesn't matter where you are in the world if you come down with a diagnosis of any of those diseases. We're talking about an order of quadrillions of units of integration between blood of the human being, speed of light, and the magnetism constant. The magnetism constant respects the periodic table of elements. There are no boundaries overpassed by any of the conversion from AMU units, atomic mass units, to resonance units of magnetism, which are reciprocal with the human DNA strand and the base pair electronic sequence and subsequent publications of all the DNA research. So I just would like to start teaching the magnetism constant and see it being taught rather than it not be. Oh, yeah, there are huge companies and organizations with a lot of power and money like the Michael J. Fox Foundation for Parkinson's Research and the Parkinson's Research Organization down in Florida and London, England, and they have billboard powers, and they can say we're this close. They promoting themselves we're in the cure is imminent, but they're not at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael, but your time is up. Anyone else?
My name is Scott Partey, and I'm a resident of Bangor, and I want to congratulate all of you that won election. I think it's fantastic, and hopefully this year will be different than last. I really want to implore you to make it an hour at the beginning like it used to be. I know that was a promise or was somebody's campaign thing over a year ago, and nothing has been done. So that's something I'd like to have done, is get that taken care of. I'm going to speak tonight to formally request and insist that the immediate comprehensive solution to the crisis of homelessness and its associated public health emergency, specifically the ongoing HIV outbreak, to be designated as a top priority of the next city council agenda. We cannot achieve genuine civic beautification or progress by continuing to ignore the visible distress of our most vulnerable population. Addressing the crisis on our streets is not just a moral obligation. It is the most critical step we can take to mitigate the current public health outbreak and prevent it from spreading. The focus on funding and implementing cosmetic projects like putting murals on the outhouses instead of implementing a strategic plan to permanently address the homeless situation is shameful. It is a failure to prioritize people over superficial aesthetics. Ignoring the visible distress on the streets won't make the city beautiful. It only protects this vulnerable population from receiving the help they urgently need, failing both them and the entire community. This issue, especially with the ongoing HIV outbreak, requires immediate, permanent action, not artistic distraction. I previously submitted a detailed action plan and received no acknowledgement. While I hope you review it, if my plan was deemed inadequate, the council should immediately devise, fund, and place your own definitive strategic plan on the upcoming agenda. Let's not go through this next year, too. It's silly. I require concrete action and accountability, not further delay. Please confirm that a substantive discussion and commitment to the solution will be scheduled immediately. Let's not drag this out anymore, guys. It's really ridiculous. I think we've all become numb to it. I think we all drive downtown on Main Street. We see people wandering up by the homeless shelter and ignore it. You know, it's become such a thing that we can ignore it. Take a look at my email. I will send the email to the new counselors that didn't get it. And it's just a draft of a plan. You know, we can do better, and it's an easy fix. And then we can paint the outhouses. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Dave Spellman. I'm an employee at the Bangor National Airport. I'm not a resident of Bangor. We're the people that are responsible for keeping the airfield compliant with FAA Part 139. It's the federal standard of federal safety standards that allow commercial aviation to operate here. Our work directly supports not only passenger airlines, but also the Air National Guard, Army National Guard, and Lifeline to Maine. Every takeoff and every landing in Bangor depends on the work that our team does, often in the worst weather Maine can offer. Despite that responsibility, we are struggling to reach a fair contract with the city. Our infrastructure is 70 years old, nearly 70 years old, and our workloads have only increased as the airport continues to grow. Passenger traffic has remained at record levels, yet the budget line for airfield maintenance salaries and fringes has only increased by 1.2% in the past six years, largely due to cuts in personnel. Over the last 15 years, we've fallen behind cost of living by nearly 10% in pay. Even just in the last eight years, we've fallen behind in 6%. Meanwhile, the airport revenue tells a different story. Since 2015, revenue was up over 100% and up over 50% just since 2021. Expenditures have increased only 24% in the last six years. That's strong fiscal management, but it also means the airport has a capacity to do right by its workers. Administrative salaries, for example, have increased over 28% in just the last four years alone. There are three of those positions that receive raises better than 12% just for 2025. We're not here to criticize anybody. We have excellent supervisors and a positive work environment. We take deep pride in our work and represent the city of Bangor, but pride doesn't pay the bills, and dedication alone cannot close a 10% wage gap. We're simply asking to catch up with the basic cost of living increases and to stay caught up moving forward. That's not unreasonable. It's fair. It's sustainable. It ensures the airport's frontline workers continue to maintain standards of safety, reliability, and service that Bangor's reputation depends on. Thank you for your time and consideration and from the people that keep the airport running every day.
Thank you, Mr. Spellman.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question of Mr. Spellman?
Sure.
Mr. Spellman, thank you so much for your delivery tonight. I really, really appreciate, and thank you for your service to the city. I do have a question. Can you go over what the training is to basically acquire a new airfield tech, and what are the overall costs of your field when you do have turnover?
Well, it's our, you know, our job is unique in the sense that there's no real accessible formal program to teach in airfield maintenance tech like there is like a cop or a firefighter. There's no academy you can send a new employee to for 12 weeks or eight weeks or whatever and get them back, and they're completely trained. In our line of work, it takes, you know, several years. It takes three or four years of on-the-job training and, you know, the in-house type of training that's offered at the airport to actually make a competent airfield maintenance tech. And, you know, that's because the standards are a little bit different than, like, the job that we do is very similar to like a DOT worker's job. We, you know, we paint lines. We, you know, we fix potholes. We do, you know, stuff like that. But on an airport, it's a lot different because the standards are way more strict for obvious reasons. Also, you have the component of communicating with air traffic control. So, you know, our guys are constantly in contact with, you know, the tower, air traffic control, working in, you know, airplane operations areas on the runways, taxiways, and whatnot. And it takes a long time training somebody on the job to be competent in doing that safely.
Okay. I really appreciate your perspective, and and I'm certain that the shutdown has only made your jobs much more difficult over this period of time. I mean, obviously, a lot of the focus goes on air traffic controllers, but thank you for bringing this to our attention, and I think it definitely serves a worthy look going forward into the future. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I have a handout of my statement if I could leave.
Oh, please, absolutely.
Thank you, sir. Pastor Dinkins.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Pastor Terry Dinkins, and I am a resident of Bangor and the pastor at the Mansion Church on Sinus Street. I want to thank you for your continued support for the warming centers in our city. All three are very critical to our homeless to stay warm and safe for the overnights and the cold months. I want to express my thanks to the Together Place for stepping up this year to be the third warming overnight warming center in our city. Us in the Brick Church have been Mormon centers for the past few years and are very blessed to be able to serve our community in keeping people warm, safe, and with many hot meals. Please feel free to stop by our warming center at the Mansion Church any evening between 6:00 and 7:00 PM to witness the work that so many volunteers are doing for our homeless in our community. We have been open since November 1st, and last night we served around 20, and the numbers will continue to increase as the weather will turn colder in the months ahead. I also want to bring to your attention a continued drug epidemic that we have in our city. People are still dying on our streets, and we can do better than this. I am a big supporter of Chief Mark Hathaway and the city's police department. Please continue to give them the resources that they need to fight against the drug epidemic in our city. I have lived in the Bangor area for over 50 years, and it's definitely not the city I grew up in for sure, but I believe we can do better to save our citizens from the evil of drugs. I want to believe that someday we could be a drug-free community. Please, city councilors and to our citizens of Bangor, let's fight against the drugs in our city to make a better future for our beloved city that we all live and work in. Thank you for your time this evening. If there's anything I can do to help out, please just ask me. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, good evening. My name is Joe Bowman. I am a resident of Bangor. I was actually going to call in, and unfortunately, I couldn't. So I'm fortunate to have the opportunity to live close enough that I was able to rush down here and make my comment in person, but I'm also unfortunate. I'm not going to eat dinner with my family tonight. And that's just one of the things that goes with not allowing public comment, but I understand that I probably can't speak about that right now. There is a couple of things I did want to call in and speak about tonight. First of all, I'm from away. Been in Bangor for two years. I come from Northern Virginia, right outside of DC. It still amazes me when I hear, you know, how amazing Bangor may have once been, and then I hear the complaints about it now, when the streets that I walked and I grew up on were so much more worse than Bangor, and they were considered not bad for the area that I lived in. I think that I would suggest the council maybe reflect a little bit on this city is actually a very good place to live. My two teenage daughters, I have no problem with them walking down the street, living the tree streets. They go to Joe's nine o'clock at night, pitch dark. I'm not concerned. A few years ago, I wouldn't let them walk two blocks from my house because I would be afraid of what happened to them. This is a safe city. This is a good city. I'd like to congratulate the new councilors. Congratulations on winning election. I'd also like to point out the city had a neo-Nazi running. There's an element to Bangor that is not good in that sense, and I'm a little bit concerned about the way that the council is choosing to react to that element. The past few months, and I'm going to admit, Joe, I know you. I'm speaking off the cuff. If you want to talk about what I have to say later, that's fine. But the past few months of the city council have been kind of embarrassing. The tit-for-tat, the battle of egos, the just, well, I'm going to do, that's an ethics violation. I'm going to do this ethics thing. The city business isn't getting done. And I'm hoping that the new councilors are here to step up and get the city business done because you've got warming centers that are closed. You've got just, and the last statement I want to make, and this is the other thing I was trying to remember. Again, I'm speaking off the cuff. I am, oh, am I out of time? Sorry.
I will just say I believe that a lot of us on the council share your sentiments. Is there anyone else? No further. Okay. We will close the public comment. Madam Clerk.
Minutes of Bangor City Council meeting of October 27, 2025. Twenty-six dash zero zero two order authorizing the execution of a municipal quitclaim deed for real estate located at 41 Eighteenth Street. Twenty-six dash zero zero three order authorizing the execution of a municipal quitclaim deed for real estate located at 237 Fourteenth Street. Twenty-six dash zero zero four order authorizing the execution of a municipal quitclaim deed for real estate located at 256 Grove Street. Twenty-six dash zero zero five order authorizing the execution of a municipal quitclaim deed for real estate located at 299 Ohio Street. Twenty-six dash zero zero six order authorizing the execution of a municipal quitclaim deed for real estate located at 748 Kandaskag Avenue. Twenty-six dash zero zero seven order authorizing the city manager to execute a collective bargaining agreement between the city of Bangor and ASME Council 93 representing aircraft dispatchers. Twenty-six dash zero zero eight resolve acknowledging receipt of the official results of the November 4, 2025 referendum in municipal elections.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we have a motion to accept?
Madam Chair, I move the consent agreement.
Second.
Okay. The consent agenda has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, it will be accepted. Madam Clerk.
Twenty-six dash zero zero nine resolve accepting a $7,500 donation from Fidelity Charitable on behalf of the Leece and Miles Strayer Charitable Fund to provide for Bangor residents in need of assistance through the Department of Public Health and Community Services. First reading and referral to Finance Committee meeting on November 17, 2025. Twenty-six dash zero one zero resolve authorizing the city manager to appropriate an additional $60,000 from a one-time payment of $1,56970.96 of general assistance funding to support warming shelters during the 2025-2026 winter. First reading and referral to Finance Committee meeting on November 17, 2025.
Madam Chair, I move to refer all items under referrals to committee in first reading except Council Resolve 26010.
Second. Thanks. Been moved and seconded that we refer all items under referrals to committee in first reading except Council Resolve 26 dash zero one zero. Is there any discussion? Do a roll call or?
I think the other items.
I don't think we have to do a roll call. Okay.
No objection. Madam Chair, I would further move that council waive the requirement of reading on two separate days with respect to Council Resolve 26010.
Second. Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we're going to waive the requirement of reading on two separate days with respect to Council Resolve 26 dash zero one zero. Is there any discussion?
Just a point order. Because it requires a two-thirds vote, should we roll call?
We will roll call.
Okay.
No discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Counselor Beck?
Yes.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Counselor Dean?
Yes.
Counselor Faloon?
Yes.
Counselor Fish?
Yes.
Counselor Leonard?
Yes.
Counselor Mallor?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no.
Madam Chair, I move passage of Council Resolve 26010.
Second. Been moved and seconded for passage of Council Resolve 26 dash zero one zero. Is there any discussion? Seeing none?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This resolve appropriates an additional $60,000 from a one-time payment of $156,970.96 of general assistance funding to support the warming shelters during the 2025 to 2026 winter. In October, council accepted $1,156,970.96 as a one-time payment, GA payment, and appropriated $60,000 to support warming shelters during the 2025-26 winter after funding challenges led to an insufficient number of planned warming centers in the city to cover the anticipated need. The Department of Public Health and Community Services developed an application process for the distribution of funds and received two applications, each requesting the full $60,000 appropriation. Both organizations submitted quality applications that evidenced a high probability of success in operating warming centers this winter. Both organizations will rely on city of Bangor funding as well as robust additional fundraising and a volunteer network to successfully operate those warming shelters, and expressed that they each need the full $60,000 city appropriation to operate successfully. Therefore, staff recommends that an additional appropriation of $60,000 be made from one-time GA funds to fully fund both warming centers.
Been moved and seconded. So all we're waiting on is further discussion. None. So it passes. Seeing no objections, no further discussion. Resolve 26 dash zero one zero has passage.
Counselor Chair, just one point of order.
Yep.
On the prior, the referral of the other item, I heard the motion in the second and that there was no objection. I just did not hear, maybe you said it, but I wanted to make sure that the other item was referred.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. It was in there. That was at the beginning. Yep. It was in there. That was at the beginning. Okay, so that item has passed. Madam Clerk, unfinished business.
25-294 Ordinance amending Chapter 165 Land Development Code District map to rezone a property located at 69 Perry Road from Industry and Service District INS and Contract Urban Industry District UID to Non-Contract Urban Industry District UID. Counselor Mallor.
I move.
Second.
This ordinance would amend the. This ordinance would amend the Land Development Code District map to rezone the property at map lot R 28-009, located at 69 Perry Road from Industry and Service District INS and Contract Urban Industry District UID to Urban Industry District UID without contract conditions. The total area requested to be changed is approximately 2.17 acres. The applicant/owner of the record is KMD Development LLC. This would remove the previous contract conditions which restrict the permitted use to those allowed in the Industry and Service District, restricting the minimum dimensional requirements and required a buffer along the boundaries. This area is within the growth boundary shown in the 2022 comprehensive plan, and the future land use map in, in the plan shows this property in the industrial area, which consists of a range of industrial and commercial uses that benefit from the proximity to I-95 and the associated highway interchange. This item was reviewed and unanimously recommended for passage at the Planning Board meeting on November 3rd, 2025.
This is an ordinance that has been moved and seconded. We will need a roll call vote.
Counselor Beck?
Yes.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Counselor Dean?
Yes.
Counselor Faloon?
Yes.
Counselor Fish?
Yes.
Counselor Leonard?
Yes.
Counselor Mallor?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no.
The item does have passage. Next item?
25-311 Resolve authorizing the city manager to accept and appropriate $3,45,785 in grant funding from the Main Department of Health and Human Services for the Women, Infants, and Children Program. Counselor Dean?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This resolve will accept and appropriate a total of $3,45,785 in grant funds for the Women, Infants, and Children Program for the coverage period of October 1st, 2025 through September 30th, 2026. Public Health and Community Services, WIC Nutrition Program, currently services a monthly average of 2,700 participants and has been operating the program since 1974. The proposed agreement provides $832,331 in administrative funding for WIC Breastfeeding Peer Counseling and Farmers Market Nutrition Program services and $2,213,454 for food dollar costs, for a total of $3,45,785. I move passage of Council Resolve 25-311.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for Resolve 25-311. Is there any further discussion? Any objections? Seeing none, the resolve will have passage. Madam Clerk, new business.
Public hearing, application for special amusement license renewal of dice art service doing business as dice art service, 1110 Broadway, Counselor Beck.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Chair, I move, we open the public hearing for application for special amusement license renewal of dice art service, DBA Dice Art Service, 1110 Broadway.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for the application of special amusement. The public hearing is
Seeing no one approach, I move, close, we close the public hearing.
Second.
Public hearing is closed.
Madam Chair, I move passage of the application for special amusement license renewal of dice art service, DBA Dice Art Service, 1110 Broadway.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. There is no objections. It will have passage.
26-011 Order amending the City of Bangor's remote participation policy. Counselor Dean?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This order would amend and update the City of Bangor's remote participation policy to no longer allow public comment via remote means. The city is not required to allow public comment by remote means. The city is only required to provide a method for citizens to attend by remote means when members of the public body participate by remote methods. Given the recent disruptive behavior encountered during Zoom public participation and the technological limitations in this regard, the city will no longer allow individuals to participate in public comment via remote means. In order to participate in public comment, citizens may attend meetings in council chambers or submit written comments. I move Council Order 26-011.
We have a motion and a second for the amending the Bangor's remote participation policy. Is there any discussion? Yes, what, yes.
I, I have just one question. I assume this does not mean if I'm, if I participate by remote that I can act as normally, as a regular member?
Yes.
Okay. Just one clarification.
No, this would be just for public comment. We still have remote access for some things.
Hillary Simmons, resident of Bangor, ending remote public comment because a few abused it by ma- making racist or fake calls punishes the entire community for the actions for a few. It's understandable that the council wants to keep meetings respectful and safe, but removing remote access isn't the answer. It only silences the good voices while trying to avoid the bad ones. First, it's unfair to the majority. Most residents who use remote access do so respectfully and sincerely. They care about their city, but can't always attend in person, whether due to work schedules, health reasons, disabilities, or transportation limits. Taking away their right to speak because of a few hateful individuals sends the message that the council would rather shut everyone out than deal with a few directly. Second, it rewards the wrong people. The goal of trolls and racist callers is to disrupt and to get attention and to make good people angry. If the council responds by banning remote access altogether, those bad actors win. They succeed in silencing the community and weakening the public participation exactly what they wanted. Third, it's possible to fix the problem without removing access. Many cities have handled this by simply moderation tools, things like requiring speakers to register ahead of time, muting disruptive callers immediately, or enforcing clear conduct rules. These approaches stop the problem without silencing legitimate speakers. Finally, it damages trust and transparency. When residents see the council taking away their voice because of others' bad behavior, it creates frustration and distrust. People start to feel like government doesn't want to hear from them, especially those who depend on remote access to stay engaged. Keeping the option open with smart safeguards show that the council values inclusion and fairness. You don't solve hate by silencing everyone. You solve it by stand, standing up to it. Removing remote access punishes the community instead of the problem. With good moderation and fair rules, the city can protect meetings and protect public voices. Thank you. Thank
My name is Scott Partey, and I live in Bangor, and I agree with everything that Ms. Simmons said, and I, my mind was very similar, so I'm going to speak off the cuff a little bit, which I don't do very well. Here's some suggestions for alternatives. Mandatory pre-registration, that's pretty easy. I believe the county does it. I know that the state does it. That's pretty easy, and it eliminates anything. Make it a Zoom account requirement, limit remote participation to those who join via a registered Zoom account rather than anonymous. I mean, that's kind of a no-brainer. And enhance moderation. I know you know where the hang-up button is. Use it. Use the hang-up button when you hear something you don't like. We've all heard disturbing stuff, but it has been very recent. You know, I've been watching on Zoom for a long time, and I've had to participate very, very rarely, but on Zoom, and usually, it's been okay. Let's just ignore the last few months, go back over the years from when, when COVID started. It's, it's been fine. And as Ms. Simmons said, it just rewards the, the bad actors, and they, they've caused enough, I think, hate and discontent. And, you know, let's put our big boy pants on. We've all heard the words before. It's not a big deal. If you know where the hang-up button is, use
I'm Joe Bowman, resident of Bangor, now without the heavy coat. This is hot in here. It's kind of want to echo what they're saying and just kind of point out a couple other things. This is the 21st century. One of the reasons I chose Bangor is how connected the city is. It gave me an impression of a city that's forward-moving, and not embracing technology is a step backwards. You know, another thing, when I researched this to move, this place to move to, we moved here to be close to family in Nova Scotia. And when I researched Maine, one of the things that I looked up and I saw about Maine is Maine is the whitest state in the United States of America. Why does that mean something to me? My wife is brown. I come from, much further south here where we have to deal with different experiences. And when I read that, we came up here, and we spent a weekend here driving all around Bangor, Bar Harbor, everything, little country stores. So my wife, so I could ask my wife, do you feel safe? Because again, I'm bringing my brown daughters here too. We did. Since the last presidential election, the atmosphere has changed. And I think five, was it 500 and something votes that Richard Ward got reflects that. And I think if you are going to just give them a win, you're going to grow that, that just hatred in this city. You know, there's ways to stand up to them without just silencing them. So, you know, I would ask, you know, again, keep the ability for people to call in. You know, some of our people that may have a voice, that may need something to say, may not physically be able to get here. Some of us might just want to have dinner with our family. Thank you.
Thank you.
Adam Baker, Bangor citizen. I kind of want to go off of what everybody else has said of, more so like the accessibility part of like people wanting to talk on Zoom. I think it's a good thing that the council is stepping up to do something against what has happened in recent months and on here. But I think the drastic measure of just completely getting rid of it, instead of doing other things like registry or just verifying people is a better approach, in my opinion. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Leonard?
I just want to say thank you to everyone who spoke up. All your points are absolutely valid, absolutely valid. And the, 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 the long story short about it is, we are in very different times right now, and certain people feel a certain freedom that they should not feel right now to share certain hateful messages. And what I want to see in the future is us to have an ability to, as many of you pointed out, to have a registry, a registered way to come in on Zoom meetings. The, the reason why I'm going to vote yes on this tonight is simply because in order to get that done, we need to give staff the guidance and the ability to prepare for that. When staff feels that they are able to do that, I will want to bring Zoom comments back so that we can make sure that we have a civil way to allow people to have voices. But we do need time for staff to actually get that approach done. So once staff feels comfortable doing that, rest assured, I'm going to absolutely bring that as an, as a motion back to this council. Thank you.
Counselor Beck?
Yeah, I want to echo those sentiments, and I don't take this situation, this decision lightly. You know, and change is hard. I can remember, I think it was three years ago now, some guy named Mike Beck who shows up and reads a speech about homelessness. I think it clocked in about 15 minutes. And it felt like it was well-received. So like this Mike Beck guy got another speech ready the next week and showed up and found out from now on, public comment's only three minutes. It's, it's a difficult change, but in the grand scheme of things, it's also about, we have a job to do as a council. Council had a job to do then, and they want to hear from residents. We want to hear from residents. And at that time, Council Chair Rick Forney said to me, hey, Mike, send us an email. We want to read more. We want to know more. And I think that's the same thing right now. We want to hear from residents. I'm not afraid to hear from residents. I put my cell phone right out there. Call me. You know, I want, I want to hear from you. You know, I serve you, you know, and, and I want you to help inform my decisions. I don't see this as a permanent change. I see this as something very temporary. And as the other councillor had said, that we need time to learn and adapt. This is a changing thing. And yes, I know other communities are putting in different methods to try to combat some of the distractions we get. But because of the pain it causes, I don't want to build the airplane while we're trying to fly it. You know, let's get it right. You know, let's feel confident about that, and then let's revisit it, and then perhaps change the, the rules. But for, for tonight, I, I'm in favor of this. Thank you.
Counselor Faloon?
Thank you. I know there are concerns about accessibility, and so I just wanted to say that if somebody does have an issue getting here because of accessibility, that is something that we discussed, and that there could be reasonable accommodations made. So it's, this is certainly not an effort to prevent those who cannot get here from coming. So I, I think that's an important point to get across. And absolutely bringing it back, maybe once we have had an opportunity to sort of cool the temperature down a little bit after some sort of contentious meetings, and I would absolutely be in favor of that. But for now, I, I am certainly in agreement with stopping that remote participation. Thank you.
Counselor Fish?
I, I also have always encouraged public engagement and public comment, and, and greatly want to see that moving forward. But as Counselor Beck said, right now, we just don't have the, the processes in, in place to, to stop what's going on. Even if you hang up, you can't un-hear what you heard before you get the chance to hang, to hang up. And registries, from what I understand, it doesn't stop, you know, the bad guys from registering under bogus names and still breaking through the barrier. So for now, we don't like it either, but it seems like the best way to deal with this situation. There's no perfect decision we're going to make that's going to make everybody happy. It doesn't make us happy either, but it seems under the circumstances, it's the best we can do for now. While we work on doing something better. Thank you.
Counselor Mallor?
Would it be possible to amend this to a time certain that it would be done so we could, you know, I don't want to see it strung out for six months. I'd like to see it done by the first of the year. Would it be possible to amend it for that purpose?
I would think we could make an amendment or a request to date certain.
We're talking about, Chair, we're talking about a policy here. The policy can always be amended.
Mm-hmm. So.
It wouldn't have to be any period of time. If, if something is some kind of technology or system can be put in place, it could, it can be amended anytime.
I understand what you're saying, because some of the things that we say. I understand what you're saying, because some of the things that we say we're going to do, it gets tabled, it gets sidelined, and before we know it, six months has come by, seven months, people are getting really aggravated about that. So, if we could do that, that would probably be a wise way to go.
Should I make the amendment? All right, then I'd like to amend the.
Just one second. Counselor Beck.
If I could just suggest, maybe what we need to do is make a request of staff that, hey, on, you know, the first workshop of the next year, this is on that workshop, so we can revisit and have that discussion. And that way, we're not handcuffing ourselves tonight. And then at the workshop, if we want to make the change, then we would draft the new policy and get that put in. If that, if that's agreeable.
Yeah, it's agree, I just don't want to see it strung along for six months.
Okay. So, if you are in agreement with that, we will ensure that it gets put on the first workshop in January. And hopefully, we'll have ample time to discuss it fully and get it resolved, then. Anybody else right now? Mr. Partey, you had something you wanted to add?
Did. I've seen and watched for years, and I thank you, Counselor Mallon, for bringing that up. And I do believe that you should set a date. You should set a date, because everything gets swept under the rug. Things were supposed to change regarding the amount of time for speaking at the beginning of the meeting. Nothing's ever been done, and on and on. You know, Counselor Hawes, you know that it's, they disappear, and I'm thank you for bringing that up too. And I do ask that you put it, at least put a date on it, that it will be done. It's easy to do, and we have the technology to do it. So, perhaps somebody could suggest that by January 1st, that we can go back to having Zoom. It's, it's really a free speech thing too, and you really are handcuffing the vast majority. Now, you know, over the years, we've had Zoom, and it's worked fine. And we have a few bad actors that were, and they're going to win. And I, I think it's shameful to let them win. Don't you? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm also a tech guy, and my job is to solve problems a lot of the time. So, I'm already looking. One thing that other states and municipalities have done is they have methods for accepting written comment that is read at the meetings. There's still the person has the ability to have their statement read publicly, not just privately inside a counselor's mailbox. So, that might be another thing you want to consider.
Thank you. We do have that as well, that people have that option of coming live, sending information into us. We'll see that it gets out there as well. But, hello?
My name is Leon McCarter. I'm the pastor of the Brick Church. I am not a resident of Bangor, and, but I, last month, I came and had something to say, and it was taken, I think, someone said it, because I spoke against, I wasn't a resident, it wasn't considered with the same authority that residents have. And I think that should be reconsidered, because I spend more than half of my day, and I have other associates here, that, that we spend more than half of our day here in the city, and we are concerned about the things that go on here. I may not be a resident, but more than half of my day is spent right here in the City of Bangor, and I am concerned about some of the things that do go on. So, I would ask that, you know, even though, I know it's a little off the topic, but as long as we're talking about public comment, I think that should be considered, that I may not be a resident, but I spend more than half of my day here, and I am concerned about things that go on here in the City of Bangor. Thank you.
Thank you. When we ask for people that reside in Bangor to speak first, that is not saying we're not interested or don't want to hear from other people. I'm sorry if you felt that with your comment, but it's really just a deal. For a while, we were having a lot of people coming from outlying areas, and that's okay if they have things they want to talk to us about. But we like to get to the Bangor residents first. So, certainly, there, I believe the council weighs all that they hear with the same weight. You know, we all have the same concerns, so, thank you. Anyone else? There's no further comment. We ready for vote? Last call. Is there anybody else who wants to speak on this resolve, on the order? I'm sorry, the order, as we are preparing to take the vote. Okay. It was moved and seconded. Is there any objection to passage of the order? We've heard from comments, council, and public. Seeing no objections, the order will have passage. Okay. That brings us to the end of the agenda. Any staff comments? No? Only head. Counsel comments? Go ahead, I'll start with you.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, first, I want to say, I heard from a lot of residents this week saying how well, again, like it is, like it is every year, how well the election was run, and how happy they were with the service and being able to get in, and just how friendly all the volunteers were. Just what a wonderful, wonderful experience, and something I share, one of my favorite things going on in Bangor. To have a 41% turnout on top of it. I mean, the amount of work that the city clerk had to put into this and everything, I mean, just to the team, to everyone who makes this a, just a, just an amazing success every year, I want to extend personal gratitude for that. That's, thank you. That's just such a wonderful thing. And the other part is to extend gratitude to, to all of staff involved with the decision, to all of us who made the decision about the money for warming centers. That is something that has worried me, and worried me greatly, and I am so thankful that tonight, that we were able to pass that, to make sure that anybody, that we leave nobody outside this winter, you know, that we have the capacity. And just from the bottom of my heart, thank you. And last but not least, to our new elected officials, our new counselors, congratulations. I'm just excited you're here. So, thank you.
Counselor Carson. Do you have any closing remarks? Want to just say goodnight?
Great to be here with all of you.
Counselor Dean.
Well, I want to congratulate all of the elected officials, Counselor Carson, Counselor Flune, Counselor Walker. I look forward to working with you. I think this is a fresh start for all of us, and I'm very excited to start a new year. And with that, I will say goodnight to Bangor.
Counselor Leonard.
I'll just keep it short. Welcome, fellow new counselors. Happy to serve with you, and thank you all for coming tonight to voice your opinions. They're always valued, and have a good night, everybody.
Counselor Fish.
Always glad to see everybody come in, all the comments, emails. I agree, it was, it's always, no matter, even if it's a big election month, what the city does and how smooth it goes is amazing. And, and I know it's a lot of work, and the city clerk does amazing, so I want to thank her and Jen and our Gundermann for her help, and our city manager, and our GA office, and our warming centers for helping resolve this as quickly as they did. And hopefully, we can work something out so in the future, we won't be here like this. And I want to welcome the new counselors. Always exciting, always makes me remember my first day, and it's very exciting. Welcome aboard, and goodnight, Bangor.
Counselor Baller.
I would like to congratulate the new counselors for being here. We're going to have a difficult, long year ahead of us, I'm sure, but it'll always be interesting, to say the least. And I want to assure Mr. Partey and others here that I will be insisting that something does get done on the public comment session. And with that, goodnight, Bangor.
Counselor Walker.
Being my first meeting, it was, it was a learning experience. I thank everyone for their kindness, and for the city clerk, and everyone, that the election went well. I am very excited that we were able to pass funding for, extra funding for the warming shelters here, together placed in the Brick Church. It's very, it, it feels good that they're going to have enough funding to do this for our community. I'm also going to take into consideration what was said tonight about the public comment, and also be in favor of revisiting that after January 1st, and be a reminder for that. So, goodnight, Bangor.
Counselor Flune.
Thank you. I just want to say that I am so honored to be here, and thank you so much to the Bangor voters and for showing up in force and for putting their faith in me and the other new counselors. It's, it's really so rewarding to be able to be in this capacity in Bangor, in this city that I love. And I want to congratulate Counselor Walker and Counselor Carson as well. I want to thank all of the city's staff for their patience in getting us up to speed and getting us connected. And I want to thank all of the other counselors for all of the great work that you've done so far, and your dedication to our great city. And I'm very honored to sit here with all of you as well, because you all are, have just done incredible work, and your dedication is amazing. And I'd like to say that, you know, we, we all have such different perspectives and life experiences. We're never all going to 100% agree. I think that we can disagree better. And I appreciate so much everyone coming in, and we absolutely want to hear from you. And I don't think the decision tonight was in any way meant to stifle that communication. And I am looking forward to revisiting this discussion, but in the meantime, please, please show up to the meetings or send us an email, and we want to hear from you. Thank you so much, and goodnight, Bangor.
Thank you all for coming, participating, listening, asking questions. That's really what we like to hear from the constituents. We need to hear from you. That's why we're here. This council, I believe, is off to a great start. We have a lot to do, but we've got some time, and I think we're ready to do it. So, with that, goodnight.